Good evening, everyone. I apologize for getting started late. Our closed session went over by a few minutes. So if you could please stand for the pledge. Oh, we have to come out of closed. Just kidding. I wanted you to stand up for no reason. Sit back. I'm sorry. This isn't usually my job. We need to come out of closed session officially first. Which I don't have that. So 6:35 out of closed session. Now we can do the pledge. I thought it was closed. My apologies, everybody. I thought it was closed.
Because we come back into open session. We have final board comments. We have to see there in your eyes.
Okay.
It's still a regular meeting. We just go into open session and then come out of our closed session.
Okay. Okay. Any unscheduled public comment? No. Any final board comments? No. Okay, now we can adjourn the meeting. Can I stand now? Are we good?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. James, could you take attendance?
Yep. President Reese is absent. Vice President McDonough?
Here.
Secretary Summers here. Treasury Hanser?
President.
Trustee Schultz?
Here.
Trustee Schaefer?
Here.
Trustee Whitney?
Here.
Any changes to the board agenda? Any scheduled public comment? No? Great. Moving on to consent agenda. We have minutes from regular enclosed session. Bill's payable. Can I get a motion? Colleen?
Sure. Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support. Mary? Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Superintendent's report. Dr. Markovich?
Yes, I'm very pleased tonight to have some guests, and they would be our students from the Oxford Virtual Academy. We have had a superintendent principal advisory committee functioning toward the end of this year. We got started late, but they have accomplished a great deal on their project, and we've established a foundation for the advisory committee to continue on next year with Dr. Milligan when she gets here and the OVA administration. So I am going to let our OVA Janet or whichever administrator kind of introduce the whole project, and then we have student representatives that are going to present to you.
Evening. So glad to be here tonight to be able to present our student work. They've been such an integral part of this committee and what they wanted to do with it. Working with Dr. Markovich, myself, and Ms. Rosette. I'm going to turn it over to her. She's going to explain. She's got the whole diversity involved. I was able to, so I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you, Ms. Shaw. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to have a few minutes to just talk about what we've been working on this year. We have six members of our student advisory council at Oxford Virtual Academy. We have two of our members representing this evening, Max Reed and Max Edwards. So so glad that they can be here with us tonight. I just want to say before we begin that our group really thought deeply and thoughtfully about what project they wanted to work on this year. And I'm proud that they chose a project that really is intended to benefit all of the students and to benefit our school moving forward to, you know, feed into our continual trust for improvement. So without further ado, I'll turn the microphone over to our wonderful students.
Hi. Good evening, everyone. My name is Maxine. I'm for student advisory council at OVA. Our other members, Camara, I mean, I'm writing in. My name is Mary Alba. I'd like to be here tonight. I can look too far away, so if you could come. And I'd like to talk a little bit about our purpose and work we have done this year.
Okay. The project that we've created is a way for students to share their experiences with our online courses. The way that we did this is by creating a Google form that allows students to report errors and give feedback about their online classes. We included different options for students to categorize the issue they are experiencing to make the process easy and efficient for both teachers and students.
Basically, started off by thinking about we wanted to change it over, but make it more streamlined and easier for students. As we were discussing, we came to conclusion also had problems with our online classes, like problems with quizzes and stuff. So we decided to solve this issue by creating a Google form to reporters to look at feedback.
We first, sorry. We first started off by deciding to use a Google form to gather information from students about their experiences in our classes. Then we came up with questions we wanted to include on the form. We then started laying things out and adding to questions. After that, we organized a forum and added more questions as we thought it would be more helpful. We also changed the wording of some questions to make them more clear. Lastly, we made sure that everyone would have access to the form and double-checked that there were no errors or spelling mistakes.
We hope that this project will help to put the continual improvement of all the classes and allow students to feel heard. Students' understanding of students' experiences are important for school improvement. Our hope is this project will also, it's also, our hope for this project is to also make improvement easier by seeing it from the students' perspective. We also thought about making feedback courses easier to report and keep track of.
Any questions?
Any questions?
Great job.
I do. I do have a question.
Sorry.
So this is specifically for the full Virtual Academy, correct? As opposed to the hybrid?
Oh.
Oh, okay. Excellent. Because I know that's always been a, there's not really a great mechanism through some of those, so.
Exactly. You know, you take classes in college, online classes, and you can give your feedback. We wanted it to be like that because really we've been working on PLE and math, creating our own classes. It's very, very expensive, very time-consuming. It's, it would be the best. But right now, we're just not able to continue to do that full force. So this helps us with our content that we purchase. Has to have eyes on it, you know, looking at the content. Is it aligned? Is it free of errors, just like in a classroom? Teacher goes to write something on the board or has a printout that has errors. That happens everywhere. So rather than it just be us all the time looking, it is gave a way for our students to get voice because how great is it that they can, you know, be farmed out to a bunch of people who will be able to refine it even more quickly and with more quality, so.
So the way that also we wanted to get this out is all of the students at OVA get a mentor newsletter each week. So we would include our link for the Google form in the mentor newsletter.
Can you think of other, can you turn about some other ideas or feedback? Or maybe like more student voice and choice to get to talk a little bit about that. I remember, Ms. Shaw. I remember. We worked together, well, the students worked, and I facilitated the Zoom session. The students talked a lot about, we talked about, you know, maybe spelling error that might crap up in a class, but also some other issues, like is it visually appealing? Or, you know, maybe the graphic that's being shown is using colors that some students can't see very well. So all kinds of feedback issues. So we started with, you know, spelling errors and things like that. And then we kind of broadened it as we continued our discussion. And then the students adjusted the Google form accordingly.
So any questions? I can assume, but how has the staff feedbacked then regarding this endeavor? I would assume positive. It sounds like it's helped them as well as the students. It seems like a great project.
So we're excited to launch this Google form. We're assuming the approval of Dr. Markovich. And the feedback that I have received from teachers talking with them about the project is overwhelmingly positive. They want to know what students are seeing and hearing and experiencing so that we can make their experience better.
Great. Well done. Thank you.
Thank you.
What, I was just going to say, what really impressed me about this project, and I said between snow days and participating in the search for the new superintendent, we didn't have as much time as they're going to have next year. But this is really a valuable experience. What impressed me about it was here were the students who said, "We want to make our learning materials better so our own learning can get better." And, you know, sometimes when you meet with students, they want longer coffee breaks or more time to watch the halls or a better menu or maybe a little bit more leeway on turning in those assignments late. But not this group. They went right to the core of our job here is to learn, and these materials help us, and we want to make them as good as they can be. And that was, that impressed me a great deal. So thank you.
Okay, moving on. We have the OMS music field trip. Can I get a motion?
Move to approve the OMS music field trip to Vandercook College of Music Clinic, May 2 through 3, 2025, in Chicago, Illinois.
Support. Heather? Discussion? Okay. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to the OMS kitchen equipment remodel proposal.
Hi, I'm Kayce Laurie. I'm the food service director here. I would like the board to consider approving a renovation at the middle school. We put, it's been a long time since the middle school had new equipment, and it needs to be renovated. I have excess funds in my fund balance, and I would like to use some of that for this. We've put out a bid for a list of materials. You have it there. And we are going with Douglas Equipment. It was the lowest bid. So I'm asking you to approve that.
And questions in there?
Yeah. Patty, do you mind going through just a little bit of what the equipment is that you're looking to replace on the bid? I see it here. Sorry to sound, but if you wouldn't mind.
No, I don't mind. So it's never had a dishwasher. And we're feeding about 700 kids there a day. So that's a lot of dishes for my staff. So I'm putting in a dishwasher, a new three-compartment sink, a double oven, a combi oven, which is what we cook our fries in. And then I'm renovating the snack shack to make it look like a marketplace with all new equipment in that. And a cash register stand where she will slide about and face in to look in the market to prevent theft.
Will any of this help? I know you've had double the demand when the new regulations went through for free breakfast, free lunch for everyone. Is any of this equipment going to help you with that double demand?
For sure. The oven can cook fries in about seven minutes, which is about half of the time it takes to put them in the oven, and they're better quality. And the new ovens, they're always, the old ones are always breaking down, and we're coming for service. So yes, this will speed things up.
Any other questions?
No, just thank you. I know, I guess I'm going to do that. That all the bids were relatively close to each other, right? They were all within, I think, really plus or minus four or five thousand dollars. So I appreciate your diligence. It looks like they were really close. And I'm sure, I mean, when it comes to, I don't know the vendors, but sure, fine.
Thank you.
So we'll make a decision at the next meeting on this? Thank you very much. Next up is the 2024-2025 Oakland Schools' General Fund Budget. If anybody would like to make a motion on that, we had discussed at the last regular meeting. Mary?
I'm voting today. Move to approve the Oakland Schools' General Fund Budget as presented.
Support. Colleen?
Support.
Discussion? I actually did have something. You know, it really does not matter how we vote on this. The, they are going to make their budget as they will. And so this is mainly just giving feedback for the districts that maybe vote no. So I just wanted to let my fellow board members know that I will be voting no for the reason that they are running with a $2.6 million deficit. They are already paying $3.4 million on outstanding principal and interest yearly payments for loans at this point. Property taxes are increasing by 6% this year, but only 2 in four for the next five years. And they are still increasing their staff numbers in light of the deficit. So that's just my quick synopsis of why I will be voting no. But again, they make their own, so. Can we have a roll call vote?
Yep. James Summers? No. Mary Hanser?
Yes.
Amanda McDonough?
No.
Colleen Schultz?
Yes.
Heather Schaefer?
Yes.
Mike Whitney?
No.
And Erin Reese is not here.
Split. I'll have to send it back to them.
Yeah.
So we can send back our feedback?
Yes.
That?
Yeah, for sure.
Half said no and half said yes. All right. Moving right along to Oakland Schools' ISD Board Election. There were four candidates. I hope you all had a chance to watch the interviews. One was not present. And if, do you want to start with a motion? And we can discuss if anybody has candidates, or I can, because I also have two candidates that I would like. All right, I'll take it then. I move to designate Carol Finkelstein and W. Semino Scott as the board representative and board's alternate representative to serve on the 2024 Electoral Body responsible for electing members to the Oakland Schools' ISD Board of Education.
They would go into the second motion. That's to designate somebody from us.
Oh, shoot. I read the wrong one. I'm sorry.
Nobody seconded, so you can.
Okay. I withdraw that and move to support the candidates, W. Semino Scott and Carol Finkelstein for the two positions on the Oakland Schools' ISD Board of Education, each for a term of six years ending June 30, 2030. Thanks for bearing with me on my endeavor here. Support. Mike? Discussion?
I did support Carol. I was also supporting Mark Katz. I do know Mr. Katz and his dedication to students in Oakland County as well as students across the state. I did not see the same kind of experience from the other candidates. I was disappointed that Ms. Gandy Thompson wasn't even able to come to the interviews. But I do, I will add that I support Carol Finkelstein, but my other support would be for Mr. Katz.
Any other discussion? Colleen?
Yeah. I too would like to support Carol Finkelstein and Mark Katz.
Anybody else?
I like Carol Finkelstein on that. And then the other two, I, to be honest with you, I was on the fence. So I don't have a support for either one of those two, but definitely Carol.
Yeah. I found Semino very interesting. He, he's very involved in his community in Pontiac and in the education system there. He has done a lot of really great things. He was actually the only one that I was really, really excited about and went and searched a lot more about what he's done. He has these programs. I wrote a few down. He does these citywide cleanup and improvement efforts. He has this program with the Pontiac School District, Dads Doing Their Duties, and that has been very successful in children's education and community. He has a doctorate of educational studies. He emphasized safety. He was really the only candidate that did so in the interviews. And he just really resonated with me. So that's, that's my say on that.
Amanda? So, yes. I too would support Carol Finkelstein. I've done a lot of programs with her over the years, and she just has a ton of experience to bring to the table. And then I also liked Semino Scott as well.
All right, since we. Sorry. Since we have this motion on the table, let's go ahead unless anyone has anything else. Let's go ahead with this motion with a roll call vote, please.
Mary Hanser?
No.
Amanda McDonough?
Yes.
Colleen Schultz?
Yes.
Heather Schaefer?
Yes.
Mike Whitney?
Yes.
James Summers? Yes.
Okay. Okay. Those are our two. And moving backwards now, would anybody like to make the motion that I originally did?
Well, before we start with that, I will let my fellow board members know that I will be there helping out anyway with the election. So I am willing to serve as the board's representative. All this, what this is, excuse me, is bringing the ballot in and dropping it off. And then I will be there so that when they count the ballots, if there are any ties, then the people that are actually in the room on that night would then vote. And I would, and I would be, and I would be voting as our board had intended to vote or had voted in the first place. Yes, I would promote who we were already supporting. So I'm willing to do that if you, if somebody wanted to designate me.
For the alternative? Move to designate Mary Hanser as the board's representative, as the board's alternative representative to serve on the 2024 Electoral Body responsible for electing members to the Oakland County, Oakland Schools' ISD Board of Education. Support?
Yes.
James? Any discussion?
Thanks, Mary.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And moving on to first reading of 4,000 Series of TRUON Policy. Again, I won't go through every single one because we would be here all night. But you all have copies of them, and you have all seen there's a couple that are being withheld. 4303, 4103, and 4507 are being withheld at this point. We have additional questions?
The typo on 4203. My fault.
Oh, sorry.
In addition, 4203.
No.
Oh, that's not, okay.
That's not be there.
Gotcha. This is the typo.
I handed a sheet of paper that wasn't clear.
Okay.
So we had, through Policy Committee, a few more questions that we are waiting for answers on TRUON with the holiday weekend. It's going to take a little bit. We don't have those answers quite yet. So we are not bringing those to you at this point. But as far as the other ones, you've seen all of our changes and additions up to this point that have all been approved through TRUON.
Okay.
Okay? So could I get a motion? Mary?
Move to approve the first reading of Series 4,000 Board Policies, except for policy numbers 4103, 4203, and, oh, sorry, I crossed wrong enough. Erase. 4103, 4303, and 4507 as presented.
Support? Mike? Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to the safety and security update. Allison, thank you.
I am here today to hopefully, you know, people not be able to provide some more information for movement to using Raptor Emergency Management and Raptor Visitor Management in transitioning away from our current practice, which is school gate guarding for visitor management system. We are going to be using Raptor Student Safe to house all of our threat assessment, suicide risk assessment, and bullying investigations next year, and that's part of the 97 J grant that we were awarded. So in our continuous effort to research school-based, school safety and security practices as well as streamline what we already have in place, I can bring you new information about the emergency management and visitor management. So Raptor is a mission partner and 100% aligned with the I Love You Guys Foundation, and that is through the Standard Response Protocol and the Standard Reunification Method that Oxford Community Schools adopted through our EOP last year. The state of Michigan will be adopting it for the '24-'25 school year. We were able to move ahead of the curve because I'm a trainer for both of those already. In addition to that, we will be able to give all of our staff members next year a cheat sheet for the Standard Response Protocol. It's a little plastic reminder for that as well as having that posted in our yellow flip charts that are already there. What moving to a Raptor Emergency Management will do is anything that we need to use for our drills, if we had to reunify, it's a web-based platform so you could use it on your phone, on a computer, on your iPad, any of that, without having to rely on paper-based items. And as part of our reunification kit, we do have hotspots. So power going out, or that may be an issue. But looking at if we had to go to some of our reunification locations, the hotspots are there, so we'd be able to connect. It does sync with Power School to ensure that we have the most up-to-date information. And then we are also able, through the emergency management, to upload and share building maps, protocol procedures, and the EOP with the appropriate parties. So administrators could have access to something different than what the teachers would have access to. It's able to be completely personalized. In addition, as part of the Raptor Emergency Management, it also includes Raptor Alert, which complies with Alyssa's law legislation. And we've talked about that before. It's the silent panic button that would be in each classroom. It's currently, it's been passed in six states and it's in process here. It was referred to the Education Committee over a year ago, and there's been very little movement. But we know that it's coming. So again, we want to stay ahead of the curve on this. This Raptor Alert would work in conjunction with our current mass notification system, but there are certain spots within the building. So that mass notification system complies with the current Michigan law, but Alyssa's law is required on each classroom. And so Raptor Alert is able to do that. Dr. Markovich and I have done a lot of research on silent panic buttons and different things like that. And it's been over $100,000 just for that. So that's included within the quote that was given to you today. And then, like I said, it has the reunification, it has the accountability. NOBI has also implemented that, and they've invited us because they're doing a full-scale training on June 10th. So our Massey, Kathy Resteau, or our district reunification leads are going down to that to get on the ground as they walk through reunification training, in addition to going through their own reunification and as the state implements it, become trainers themselves. Liz Canoe, who's my assistant, will also be going because she does a lot of the backend work on reunification method with them. And then the visitor management, that would replace our school gate guardian. It allows them to sign in under multiple visitor types with questions unique to what they're there for, whether they're a volunteer, a parent coming to check out, a student, a contractor. The badges are detailed, visitor badges, more detailed than what we have now. We'll be able to track the visitor type, screen visitors against sex offender databases, and even include things like custody orders because it also syncs with Power School. So that anything that showed up as alert, would that alert administrators, our SROs, and our appropriate personnel who we need. Raptor itself is in over 35,000 schools across the country, and it's purposely built for K-12 schools. It's not a security company trying to enter into education. It started in education almost 20 years ago with the mind of the K-12 setting. They are, they have industry partners with Safe in Some Schools, NASRO, the National Association of School Resource Officers, I Love You Guys Foundation, Partner Alliance for Safer Schools, and are integration partners with products we already have, such as our transition for the camera software access, Motorola, Power School, and ZeroEyes. And if you are able to move forward in approving it tonight, that would allow me to get my summer training scheduled because everyone's trying to get that scheduled right now. I have the training scheduled for our Student Safe, but I would like to go ahead and start getting that moving forward as soon as we can because the dates are going to fill up quickly. Does anyone have any questions?
Is this all grant-funded?
No, just the Student Safe is grant-funded. The emergency management and the visitor management is not grant-funded. But like I said, Dr. Markovich and I have done a lot of research on Alyssa's law. And the products we found complying with Alyssa's law was over $100,000. So this is, I believe, around $34,000. That would include the silent alarms, emergency management, visitor management, our drill manager, accountability, and reunification.
How much are we currently paying, do you know, for the software that it's replacing?
We do not have this at all right now.
For the visitor management system?
We, school gate guardian, it was a grant funded already, and it's going to exhaust this year. So we would have to renew our visitor management. I apologize. I'm sorry. I didn't understand.
You're a little bit, sorry.
Apologize.
Okay, thank you.
And how much was that for the guardian?
About $18,000 with some change.
And this reoccurring, I'm looking, so the reoccurring cost, I'm guessing it'd be the annual cost
Yes.
of this is around $27,000, right?
Yes.
There'd be additional $8,000 or so, or six, yeah, $8,000 or so is, is just install, installing costs or one-time?
Yes, because we, one thing that elementary's have been asking for is an additional printer, especially when we have larger events, trying to print out all those visitor badges. We're able to use our printers that we have now, and we'll get more printers, which then satisfies what they've been asking for. We're able to check in differently so that they'll scan at the desk. They can use an iPad because there's unique questions for each visitor type. And so there are reoccurring costs, and it would be more than just the visitor management. But there's other components besides just the visitor management with this that we don't currently have.
So this is an enhancement?
Yes.
We've been talking in policy to reviewing some of those policies, and it seems like to be able to have more detailed information on the people coming into the buildings, as well as have it being better displayed on people when they're in the buildings, I think would be very helpful.
So the summary is, we have to replace the visitor management system anyways. This is a better system in conjunction with the fact that it has the silent alarms and all of the other added security measures.
Yes.
And those will be required by statute?
Eventually, it's in the Education Committee right now, that's where it's been referred. But it's been passed in six other states, and it's also in legislation at the federal level as well. So we know that it's coming. We just don't know exactly when. But again, I don't want to wait for a law to tell me what to do. I want to be able to stay ahead of what's, what we know is best.
Right.
Also, it's a law that should be passed, and maybe even if it's not passed, we'd want to do it anyway.
Yes, right.
When did you say you expected to have this up and running?
It would, we would be, what they're going to do is it's a 12-month contract, but they're giving us 14 months of it. So like today, I got access to the Student Safe already because that was grant-funded. We already took care of that, so I have my login already for Student Safe, which then allows me to get trained and then be ready for when I have my safety meeting with my administrators in the summer. So technically, it starts July 1, but we do have this time of May, what's left of May, and then June to work on the tech, not the backend part of it, and then making sure that myself and our section chiefs are comfortable with it before we turn it around with campuses.
Okay, and when is your target date for full staff training?
Administrators will be trained July 30, 31st. I apologize. It's the Wednesday when they come back in the afternoon. And then the visitor management is a 20-minute video, so then it would be, as everyone's back on contract. I did watch a short video for all teachers because within the Student Safe and then with the emergency management, there is that component for teachers, and there's short video clips that they would be able to watch whether we're doing it. They're going to stay, it'd be very early in the year. I don't have a date set for that because I didn't want to put the card before the course. I'm hoping you guys will approve it, but I don't want to get too far in the weeds on it.
Sure. If approved, would your goal then be to, similar to EPR Training or others, to have staff completely trained and ready to use this before school starts next year?
Yes.
Okay, and you'll have a mechanism in place to ensure that our numbers are 100% or close to?
Yes.
Okay.
As far as, I'm looking at the Visitor Safe Suite, a couple of these zero-dollar ones, right?
Yes.
That, the Visitor Safe Suite specifically says like special offer. It says, it's an annual, it looks like an annual cost, but it says zero dollars across the board, but it's not the offering. So is, is that something that's going to cost money next year?
Not with the force of our contract because we're getting that and we have this, because we're kind of, that's what they're throwing in because we're getting multiple products at the same time.
Okay.
There is an additional background check that you can do that is not listed on there. That would be, it would cost money for each one, which could be a possibility should campuses administration deem that necessary, but that's not on there.
And currently, this contract's only, I mean, 14 months?
Yes.
Yes, the period, 12 months they're giving us. Okay, so this will have to be reviewed next, each year?
Yes.
Have you looked at grants to cover this, as the last one was?
We don't have one available for this. We haven't been able to find anything that would be able to cover all of this. There are some other grants that we're looking at, things like our radios, as we talked about, they're aging out. We have 57 that we need to replace, so there is a grant that I'm applying for that. But as far as these products specifically, I haven't been able to find one outside of the 97 J, which I didn't apply for, and that did get for the early behavior intervention.
Thank you. Anyone else? Well, if the board is comfortable, would anybody like to make a motion? Heather?
Move to approve that Raptor Emergency and Visitor Management System proposal is presented.
Support? James? Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Allison.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to Finance and Operations, Tax Collection Agreement.
Good evening. I have in front of me 2023 through 2026 Tax Collection Agreement with Brandon Township. This is an agreement that we get every few years. Actually, it's a three-year agreement, as you can see. Last one we signed was in 2021. And what this does is it assigns the cost by, obviously, Brandon Township for each household that is being levied tax from the school district. In particular, this is $3 per household or per plot. And so again, this is something that we do, you know, every three years. And we actually pay the township of Oxford a smaller fee, but they collect a lot more of our taxes, obviously, it's a little bit larger. So that's what you have in front of you.
Any questions?
Is there anything we have to?
No, we move back to June 4.
You move back to June 4. Just as a reply as well, this represents about 10% of the fees that we pay collectively to all of the taxing authorities that do have an agreement with us. Approximately for this year, we paid about $22,500 fees to collect taxes, so this is just right around 10% of all of that.
Thank you. Moving along, Budget Hearing, Courtney?
Courtney's going to come up and put the slides up, and I'm going to do a short introduction before she gets to all the numbers. And so we're going to start with the five-year deficit elimination plan because it kind of explains how we got to the numbers that Courtney is going to be showing you. So you may recall that back in October '23, we brought you our first projection for a budget deficit. And the question that you asked then, and probably people are still asking, is how did we get here? It was kind of a new situation for Oxford that had, they had not had to deal with in the past. And there were two major things that got us here. COVID happened, and then after COVID, there was a lot of one-time-only money that came to school districts, ours as well as others, that was designed to put people in place to help kids catch up with their academics. And those people, of course, are ongoing costs that were paid for while the grant was there with one-time money. And then the one-time money sunsets, and you still have the people. For Oxford, that same thing was true. After the tragedy, we received recovery money for the tragedy. And we put a lot of interventions in place under the safety and mental health arenas. And those interventions weren't just programs and equipment. A lot of those interventions were people in the areas of safety and mental health. And so we, we basically hired some ongoing costs with one-time money. And when you do that, budget deficits are going to develop because you begin spending more than you take in on an annual basis as you are spending down that one-time money. So back in '23, when we did the early five-year projection, we were looking at a cliff of about $7 million plus. Then we put some things in place. We got some plans going, which I'll go into a minute. We did, started doing budget reductions. And by January '24, that projection went down to $5 million. And now the projection I'm bringing you is balanced, but I caution you, barely balanced. And you'll see that when Courtney gives her numbers. But we got there by doing a variety of things. Probably the most significant is way back, starting in the '23, is we began doing position control. So anytime anybody retired or resigned, we did not automatically replace that position. We put it through a study. We looked at the work that was being done. We looked at whether or not it could be done some other way, whether it could be done by other people, and whether or not maybe it was, was all the work still, still required to be done. And so in fiscal '24, we were able to reduce eight positions strictly with attrition. Then this year, we, we did not, we continued position control, but we also looked at some of the staff-student ratios we had in our district. And our staff-student ratios are pretty strong in terms of our building-level things. It appeared that at the central office level, we had more staff than our seated student population would merit. And so we began adding to the attrition, say layoffs. And I brought you those layoffs several months ago, or I brought them to you actually in January because my philosophy has always been if you're, if you, if you have to take people out of a job, you should give them as much notice as possible, which we did. And we were able to reduce, reduce again by 12 positions. So in the two years or 18 months, we basically reduced 20 positions. And our budget is over 85% personnel, so that, that is significant. And when you take out positions, you're taking out recurring costs, which helps you live within your recurring revenue. We also had, the board had asked us to do a five-year facilities plan, and everybody did a really good job with the five-year facilities plan, but it would have cost about $1.3 million a year, and we did not have that. So the budget you're about to see from Courtney has only $500,000 per year around facilities. And that is barely enough, and may not always be enough, to handle your routine maintenance and then any kind of emergency or urgent thing that, that might come up. But it is, it is a low number. But that allowed us to take $800,000 a year out of the budget. We have, in terms of class sizes, we have two things going on in our district. We have a contractual limit at different grade levels, and we have a target limit. And the contractual limit is higher than the target. But what we did is we began looking at our class sizes across district, and really, a lot of your class sizes are target. But in, in several places here or there, they went significantly below target. So we brought those up to target. So as an example, K-2, the target is 25. The contract limit is 27. In grades 3, 5, the target is, is 27. The contract is 29. In grades 7, 8, the contract is 31. The target is 29. In 9, 12, same thing, 32, and the target is 30. We have not gone to contract level on any of our staffing for next year, but we have tried to get closer to target. And that has allowed us to reduce three positions at the elementary level. And I think three positions also at the secondary level. We also reduced administrative positions significantly, mostly central administrative positions. And if you go to the next page and you look at position control, that's a listing of all of the position, of the 20 positions that I just mentioned were taken out of the budget. We also did purchase control. We were going to replace every five years, as we've done in the past, our, begin replacing our student computers. We found out that our Chromebooks would be supported by the company for another two years. And we talked with our computer folks who felt that they were in good enough condition that they could be serviced over the summer, and we could meet our student needs with existing computer forces with maybe just a, an occasional add-on here or there. So we're extending the life of our technology by two years. You will need to begin doing a refresh in '27, but we believe that we can make it through '27 and be fully supported. We also, as I mentioned, set aside the $500,000 a year in facilities, but that required, that was a lot of cutback. The, one of the best things that fell our way is we really look at our, took a strong look at our healthcare. The Blue Cross program was going up over, I think Ryan, is she here, was it 12%, 12, 12 and a half percent? Big hike. Last year was a big hike. And so we have an agreement with our employees that when those hikes come, we can look for other sources. And that led us to investigate insurance pools. There's a really big one in Michigan that you heard all about. I won't repeat it. But the point of that pool is, it did two things for us. It significantly reduced the risk because we were running some insurance programs that if they, if they cost more in claims, then we were covered. The claims you would have had to have paid directly out of your fund equity, which is why you had that set aside for the insurance risk set aside. So that's one thing this has gone with because we're now in a larger group. And one significant event isn't going to throw the group out of whack because we're part of hundreds of thousands of people. The second thing is, is that also keeps the increases every year more even. So we are not, this particular pool has never had a 10 or 12% increase. They're more around 4, 5. I think 6 was the highest I saw on a 10-year chart. So it will level that out as well, and, and that will help significantly. And the good news is, all of our employees get PPO, some a no-cost PPO, and then there's other variations of PPO costs. We no longer have to do HMOs. So the employees will get better insurance for less money for them, and the district will, will pay less. So that was huge. We're also looking at ways to reduce overtime, especially by our contracted services. And we have put controls in place to control a lot of what we do relative to workshops and conferences. So the challenge now is, how do we keep going in a direction to live within our means? It's just like every family. You have so much income coming in, that pretty much dictates how much expenditure you can have going out. And you had indicated to me that before I could leave the district, I had to leave you with some recommendations to keep the budget balanced over a five-year period. And so, you know, everything's ready for me to, to go. So this is, this is the last page, I guess. The first thing we have to do, and you'll see it when you get to Courtney's presentation, is you have to keep up with moving targets. And there are just lots of moving targets. Two examples you're going to see in her presentation is earlier this year, when the governor and the senate and the house all threw out their, you know, what should we get for per pupil funding next year? We expected it to stay about the same, and it's not. It's going to probably go down. So we adjusted downward to an average of what's being lobbied right now in Lansing. And that costs us $1.6 million less per year over five years. At the same time, legislation was passed that brought us a MIPSR supplement we weren't expecting in the fourth quarter, which is giving us $1 million ahead for the next four years. So it's a constant, and so much is going on in Lansing. It's, it's a constant, you have to be constantly vigilant about the ups and downs with that money because it's significant in terms of how it can impact your projections and your spending going forward. So that's one thing. I think you need to continue to operate within class size and caseload limits, not, I have it up there contractual. That really isn't, not, shouldn't be contractual. It's really truer to the target size. I don't think you ever want to plan to be at the contract limit because then what do you do if you're over? But you do want to kind of be truer to that target size so that you can stay within contractual limits. And also in special ed, you'll now have to stay within state-required limits. The state used to let you go over, not that we ever did, but now that's been taken away and you can't. But then there are other caseloads that you, you need to try to keep within there. And you're just not at a point in time where you can operate at half the, half the number. The most important, I think, is, except if it's a grant for a special purpose that requires staffing, you have to try to keep one-time money to one-time costs because one-time number will never support your employee base forever. We're going to have to rebuild the Capital Projects Fund. You will see, Courtney, you have, you'll have, because of that million-dollar MIPSR grant I told you about, or stipend, you will have a cushion at the end. grant I told you about, or stipend, you will have a cushion at the end of this year, and you will have another fairly good cushion at the end of next year. Then, in your third year, very little left. And then, in your fourth year, you're actually minus, but only 50,000. And then, in your fifth year, you start recovering a bit. And that is kind of how it looks. You're gonna go down, and then you're gonna start recovering. So, the key is, how do you, how do you survive those two years where you're really down? My suggestion to you is that you take whatever is left of 24 and 25, you move it to capital projects, so that you have it for those facilities things that 500,000 won't cover. We also are going to have the, I don't know where the insurance settlements are gonna be for the drainer fire. There may be some issues around insurance settlements where you might need some money for that as, as well. This gets a little confusing, but remember, I talked about that insurance you had in a designated fund? It was called restricted money for insurance overages, and it was $3 million. I would suggest you redesignate that to a restricted fund for facility emergencies, so that if the boiler blows, or if the roof caves in, it's, 500,000 is not gonna handle it, we all know that. You have something to fall back on until you and the community decide if you're going to, you, you had for years, a sinking fund. You had for years, a bond issue. Those things are gone now. At some point in time, you're gonna have to try to figure out if you wanna bring those things back, or if you wanna adjust your spending more than I've done so far in some other areas. So, that's a decision for the future, but at least if you redesignate that sum of money that you no longer need for insurance, and you redesignate it facilities, if something should happen, it, it covers you. And, and then, keep seeking grants. We, we've done a really, at the end of the year, you're gonna get another grant report. You got one in January. You'll get another one when you get all your end-of-the-year reports, and you'll see that we've done pretty good at adding quite a bit of, of grant money. So, I think that's it. If you have any questions to me, for me, for, on anything I've just said now, we can ask them, and then Courtney can move to the numbers pages.
I did have a quick one. When you spoke about the, so the, the original 20 positions that were eliminated, that was all through attrition, correct?
No.
And?
The first, the first eight were all through attrition.
Okay.
The first year. And then, the second year, the next 12, there were some layoffs. There were three layoffs with some guest administrators at the high school. There was a layoff with the school safety administrator for central office. There was a layoff with the assistant superintendent for secondary instruction. And then, there were no layoffs of any teachers and no layoffs of any building administrators. Those might have gone by the wayside because of attrition and a review that showed us they didn't need to be replaced.
Okay. And then, you spoke about three positions at the elementary level and three at the middle.
High school, yeah, middle.
High school.
High school.
Where are they going?
They are being absorbed by other teachers who are retiring or resigning. So, there is positions for them, just not the same classrooms they were in. At the high school, again, they are either being absorbed in other sections, or they are folks who have left and are not being replaced.
Okay. And I had asked for some more information that I'm assuming you'll send to the full board as far as class sizes.
Yeah.
What they've been historically.
Right. Yes.
Where, where we're looking to head this year, how big of a difference.
Right. And we will, we will pull that, you'll, you'll have it before you vote next week, but we will give you a five-year history of building by building, class size by grade level.
Thank you. And then, also, the specific OVA data.
Yep. The OVA, OVA's going, OVA's gonna do a presentation for you. You know how you've been getting presentations from everybody and everything. I'm gonna ask OVA to do it before the summer's out. It'll either be the end of July or beginning of August. And it's, I know you're gonna need to have some time on your agenda, because OVA is very big and very complex, and there are multiple programs within programs. And it is A+. Every, everyone you look at is really highest quality I've ever seen anywhere. And I want Janet to be able to do that program well, too. It's not the kind of thing that we can just give you a budget figure and you can figure it all out. You really have to see the budget in the context of the program. So, that'll be coming this summer.
So, we won't have their budget numbers before we approve?
Their budget numbers are baked into our budget.
Okay. Okay. And then, also, about the enrollment, there was a projected larger decline than, I don't know which one was.
Courtney does have that, but it's very simple. So, rather than have everybody wonder, it's no mystery. Our demographer came in, and he does demography, just like everyone else does. He looks at your buildings, your economics, your student survival rate from kindergarten to 12th grade, et cetera, et cetera, the trends in special ed, the trends in online learning, et cetera, and he comes up with a projection. And he gives you a high, a medium, and a low, and then you, the district, pick which you think is gonna be most likely. And we looked at that, and we picked medium. The, the data has come in for pre-enrollment right now, and our enrollment office has said to us, it looks like we're gonna go down 2.5% instead of the 4.5% that he predicted. And so, it certainly went down within his margin, because he gave us low to medium to high, and we picked medium. This one probably fits more his low projection. So, we decided in the going forward, we were going to redo the numbers so that they more matched the low projection, which would be 2.5% next year, and then half as much the year after, and half as much the year after that. I say that with the caveat that you should do a demographic study every other year, at least, or three years at least, but I would recommend every other year. So, this is the year he's on to redo the demographics again. He only charges about $5,000 or $6,000, so it won't cost you a lot to get it done again. We have some new homing, housing developments that have come around since he last did that. We have some more new economics that have come around since he last did that. So, I think it will behoove us to have that redone. And then, that again, remember, this is a five-year projection. You get it updated several times a year. It shouldn't ever stay the same, because the environment you live in is not ever just exactly the same. It should be fluctuating with that environment and those trends.
Okay. Thank you. Did anyone else have questions for Vicki? Courtney, thank you.
Now, to the numbers. It's more exciting, the numbers.
I don't know about that. Thank you, Vicki, and Vicki Moore for coming in. As Vicki said, we've come a long way since the last time I brought my projection to you. As you can see now, we are balanced, but just fairly. We are in the positive for every year, except for fiscal '27, where we're looking at a slight deficit of about $50,000. This was not an easy task. We've spent a whole year, every decision we've made, every position we've had come open, every purchase that we've wanted to make has gone through a detailed control process to ensure that it's needed and it's the best decision. And I just wanna make sure to thank everybody that has brought decisions to the table and ideas to get us here, because we've done this with the least impact on students. I do wanna point out on this slide that we do still have that restricted surplus. I had mentioned that to you the last time I presented. That is the excess revenues for the educational solutions. We receive revenue from them, and we can only recognize as many expenses as allowed, and then the rest has to go into our fund balance, and we are not allowed to touch it. So, just as Vicki had mentioned, we have that restricted fund balance for the healthcare costs. This is also part of our fund balance that would be restricted as well. I highlighted a few of the big variances that we have. A couple of things that I just wanna point out is, we did have several grants that are gonna be sunsetting this year, which is what you'll see, the big variances in the revenue. So, our ESAR grants, our 11W, all of those are gonna be done pretty much by the time school starts next year. So, that's where you see the big fluctuations in the revenue. We also had some fluctuations in the expenses. One of the things I wanna point out is, we have had some new grants come in. We had a 35J grant that we got awarded within the last month or so. That was a, a big win for us. It was about $700,000. We also had some large legal expenses that we've had in the last couple of years. So, between fiscal '23 and fiscal '24, that's when we've seen the biggest lump of that with the independent investigation for the GAD Closer Report. So, those are all done, so next year, we won't have those. And we also are projecting that our legal expenses are gonna land probably in the $200,000 range for the next year. So, I know that was a question that came up. I wanted to make sure to point that out, that those expenses are still there and recognized in the budget. So, I just wanted to give you a picture of what our revenue, kind of the makeup of what our revenue looks like. Our biggest revenue portion is the state revenue, which is where our foundation allowance is and many of our CAT Oracle grants. So, you can see that makes up about 83%, which for fiscal '24, I'm estimating is gonna be about $89.5 million. Our total revenue for the year is gonna land around 107, 107.5 million dollars. Some of the increases we recognized from the last projection are due to, as Vicki mentioned, the increase in the MIPSers funding that we've seen, final grant award allocations, additional grants that we've received. So, that's kind of what makes up the revenue. Here's just where I wanted to show, as Vicki mentioned, the, the biggest portion of our expenses is our people. So, if you look at like basic programs on this chart, that is basically our teachers. And then, the yellow part is all of the supplies and expenses that it takes for them to be able to do their job. So, it's about four times as much that we're paying for the staff costs as we're paying for the supplies that they're using to be able to do their job. Most of the funding we receive is our, through our foundation allowance, which is based on our enrollment numbers. So, I know Vicki already touched on this, but I'm gonna go over the enrollment again. But Michigan is not the only state that is recognizing a decline in enrollment. According to the U.S. Census Bureau data, every state except for Delaware and Rhode Island has experienced a decline between 2012 and 2022. So, it's nationwide, the, the enrollment is down, and it's much, it's related to those factors that the demographers looking at, the, the birth rates, the, you know, moving to public schools, and all of those factors that come into that. Here's a graph that shows the Michigan pupil membership. So, since 2012, Michigan public school enrollment has had a steady decline. In 2012, we were just over 15.5 million pupils, and in '26, they're projecting that it's going to be just under 14 million. So, it's, it's a pretty significant decrease. We did have the demographer come out and do a demographic analysis, as Vicki mentioned, just vertical grade progression, the birth trend, birth trends, our inter-district transfers, and our expected housing growth are all the areas that he looked at to come up with his projections. When we did the five-year projection in January, we were using his projections. As Vicki had mentioned, we were using his middle projection. Now that we have closer, are closer to the beginning of the year and we have some more real numbers, we are seeing that his projection is on the high side for the decline enrollment for fiscal '25. We did carry that into fiscal '26 to kind of be more in line with the difference that we saw this year, just to be on the conservative side. We do have plans to have to come out this year to have another analysis done. Lots of things have changed, and they are, you know, moving targets. We wanna make sure that we're trying to, to keep up with it. We do have OVA projected for their full-time students at a 2% growth, and then the part-time OVA and share-time growth at 10%. Here are some of the, the proposals that we're seeing in Lansing right now. The budget is not, I don't think anywhere close for them to be the three to plan. There is a lot of differences in all three proposals in many, many areas. Everyone that I've talked to at the state has said that they've never seen this like this. Usually, they can predict, you know, if there's two of them that are kind of close and one that's an outlier, they can kind of say where they're thinking it's gonna be. And there's not, there's not a whole lot that are that close. So, when we did the enrollment, or the foundation allowance estimations, I took a, a blend of the three. So, the executive branch came in at a 2.51 increase, the House came in at 2.26, and the Senate came in at 3.14. So, I updated the projections for the foundation increase to be a blend of that. So, for fiscal '25, we are gonna go with 2.6 as of right now, and then we carried that forward. So, that was a significant change in the amount of revenue that we were expecting based on the original projections that we were thinking it was gonna remain at the 5% that we've seen the last few years. MIPSers is quite a hot topic right now in Lansing. The unfunded liability for retirees' healthcare is set to be paid off this fiscal year, so it's freeing up a lot of dollars that had previously gone towards paying for this. There's a lot of discussions around how that money should be spent, and it's reflected in each proposal. The amounts that we use for projections on MIPSers and funding and expenses costs are fluid numbers. There's a lot unsettled in this area. Once ORFs and the legislature finalize their budgets and their rates, we'll definitely be updating this, because it's definitely a moving target at this point. Here's a, a breakdown of where our fund balance is. We do have about $16.8 million as of our fiscal '23 audit, we have $16.8 million in the fund balance. However, some of those funds are restricted and not available for us to readily use. So, we have the educational solutions. That is the, the one that I referred to on the front page, where it's restricted funds that we can't use excess of the revenue. And then, we have the healthcare reserve, that that is about 3 million, or that's $3 million that we're gonna ask that we re-restrict for facilities now for those emergencies that we might have come up. And then, we also have the 3.5 million set aside from the missed instructional days due to the tragedy. So, we do have that still in our fund balance in case the state does come back and wants us to pay that back. So, the update is good news. However, as Vicki said, we still need to be cautious. When you're looking at a budget of over $100 million and you have near $100,000 excess each year, it's really have a lot of wiggle room to be playing with, and there's a lot of moving targets that we need to keep an eye on. The state has a lot of, a lot of things are still up in the air. We still have expenses that we're, you know, estimating through the end of this year. So, we just need to make sure that we stay on top of our position control and our purchase control, and be sure that we are making all the right decisions to stay here and not get back to where we were. So, and again, I just wanna make sure that I say I appreciate everybody that helped get us here, and we did this with the, with no impact on student programming, which is amazing. So, any questions?
So, I just haven't come to that, sir.
Thank you so much, Courtney and Vicki. Thanks for putting this together. And I'm really glad we just, we did these projections. We can really see what's coming up. So, just to reiterate, we're balanced, but this is nothing new. We get nothing new for the next five years.
Correct. And a big portion of why we're balanced is because we did that position control, and we made those decisions to, to, to get things to, to right size.
Right. And we're looking to have some available funds for facilities, emergencies, but we're not putting in, this gives us no room for new boilers, no new water systems, no...
Well, it gives you room, should a boiler go. We're replacing...
We're replacing two boilers that are at end of life right now. And what buildings are those in?
Lakeville and Middle School.
And Middle School. So we are looking at your equipment. We don't want anything to burst while kids are sitting there, of course. But we are going to take it, you know, up to the end when we start seeing malfunctions. We're going to fix it. But it's not going to be fixed just because it's five years old. It's going to be fixed because it's eight years old and it's causing us concern because of this, that, or the other thing. So it'll be a study approach. But yeah, you need that $3 million in your fund balance in order to cover yourselves because you used to have a million coming in through the sinking fund, and that sunsetted in '22. And that's how you ran your facilities. You ran them off of that sinking fund. So that was your buses, that was your boilers, that was your booths, that was some of your student computers. And so not only did you lose the grant money, but that's gone too now. And as I said, it's going to be a huge decision for you and the community to decide what you want to do about that. Do you want to bring that money back to keep your facilities going? Do you want to rely on this $3 million until it's gone? Do you want to...we tried our very best to not do any program cuts. We tried and we succeeded in not cutting anything that was building-level safety, security, or building-level mental health. All of those positions stayed in place. And that was difficult to do because they were positions you didn't have there before the one-time money. But they're there. And I think those are extremely important positions, and in my opinion, you have to do whatever you can to keep them there. So there's a lot of decisions that still have to be made. It's better than looking at a deficit, but it's not a total win yet.
This is amazing from where we started. We've come a long way from where we started. So thank you for all that, taking the time to look at all of that. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Nice chart.
I just had a quick one, too. Is this assuming that purchase and position control are in effect throughout this entire five years?
Yes. So the positions that we had reduced through those 20 positions, those are reflected each year. So when you're looking at positions, you cut them this year, but then you also saved that expense in the following year. So that's how we were able to get such the impact. When you're taking out one-time expenses, it only is taken at one time on your budget. So we would have never gotten here by looking at just one-time expenses.
I will say that they are...the district should always do position control and always should do, because your enrollment is declining. And so in five years from now, you're going to have one, two, three, four, probably about 4% fewer students. Depending on how they decline, you might be able to lose some sections at the high school, or you might be able to lose some sections at the middle school. You may. In this projection, we have not taken out any other positions, though. So...
Correct.
The positions you now have, we are going to try to cut back on some contracted services. We're going to...the district has to put out a request for proposal on...I mean, like you haven't done custodial maintenance now for five or so years. It's time to read RFP custodial maintenance. We want to look at that, see if we can condense positions over time. You just RFPed security, but in another couple of years, you're going to want to do that again, just because it's good business practice. So there may be some savings as you go forward, especially with your contracted services. But we've assumed no further cutbacks in personnel. But if the opportunity allows you to do that without overburdening class size or without taking a program away from kids, then you should look at it because you don't have a big cushion.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you very much, Freddie. Thank you. Okay. Moving on. Do we have public comment for budget hearing only? No? Oh, okay. Well, then...
We have one, but they withdrew.
They withdrew, okay.
There's one person in here that wanted to speak to the budget.
Would somebody like to come up now to speak specifically about the budget per the revised school code? No? Okay. Well, then we'll just move right along to unscheduled. Okay. So you can choose to stand or sit. There's a timer on the table. It will blink yellow when you have 30 seconds left and red when your time is up. And we will get started with Corey Vanderkay.
Okay. There's just so much after, like, listening to where you're planning on spending money. So I'm just going to quickly say...
Is your mic on?
My what?
Is your mic on?
Can you hear me now?
Now better, yeah.
I'm a little smaller. Okay. I said I'm a little overwhelmed after hearing where you're planning on spending money and knowing where we're headed with our finances. I still don't understand why we're even considering working on the Drainer property. But anyway, besides that, so I'm here again with the same message. All of you should have used your influence to support the families of the victims. It's a fact that certain staff members let down Madison, Hannah, Tate, and Justin. These children lost their lives while under your care, and no one, no one in this school took responsibility despite the Guidepost findings. The district was supposed to keep Madison, Tate, Justin, and Hannah, and all other OHS survivors and students safe, but they dropped the ball. Why? You need to stop pretending like this tragedy was just a fluke. It could have been prevented if the staff had just followed the district's policies and used the threat assessment form that was right there on the website. There were significant failures and negligence. We know there was leakage. We know there was staff who were concerned. We know that some people at the school who held positions of increasing responsibility failed to do their jobs. If someone would have taken this kid more seriously, this could have been prevented. The warning signs were there to prevent what took place. Those directly involved with the shooter are the same people who failed to follow practices and policies that were already in place to avoid these types of tragedies, yet they remained employed. Everyone involved needs to resign immediately. Only then can some healing begin. And in fact, all of you have sat by and allowed the board, the school, to disrespect these families behind me. You did not hold our superintendent thrown accountable for updating the emergency operation plan as required by state. I have just...what steps have you taken to ensure that the staff members who failed and are still employed do not repeat their mistakes? The shooter was not identified as a threat because staff failed to recognize that the shooter's conduct, statements, and drawings suggested that he might cause physical harm at the school. The result was that they didn't escalate it. They didn't inform the principal. They didn't escalate it to a higher person. I just...all this money that Allison wants to spend on security, it's just all for the in-case factor. But there's no mention of the money that you're going to spend to prevent it, to identify those students at risk. I feel like I've been coming here for over two years, and I haven't heard that. I hear all about, like, you know, all the security stuff that we're going to do and the badges and the stupid "go" buckets. I'm just...I cannot believe what happened here, and you're not addressing what caused it. And that you're leaving and you did nothing, and that's exactly what you said you were going to do. That was exactly how you started this. You said you were not going to deal with anything that had to do with the shooting, and that is exactly what you have done.
Good evening. A couple, like, administrative things. This agenda changed since I looked at it when it was emailed to me. So it looks like there were additions that were made up until 2 o'clock today. It can just get confusing as a parent to try to keep up with what you guys plan to talk about. I guess I need to understand from the board when I can expect, like, a final agenda before a meeting. The data that Amanda mentioned getting on class sizes of each building, can I get a copy of that, too? If you guys are all going to get a copy, I'd like a copy. So I plan to talk about class sizes and wanting smaller class sizes. But all I'm going to say about it is just that I feel that we have students in the Oxford School District with increasing academic and mental health needs, and that because of that, we need to be meeting their individual needs. And one way we can do that is by not increasing their class sizes. So my goal is always smaller class sizes for my kids with improved engagement and attention from their teachers so that they can do well at school. And, you know, I see that we have families of the victims here, and it's not...I don't feel it's appropriate really for me to even ask for small class sizes, given what they're going through. So I'm going to just end it there. Thanks.
Thank you, Marissa. Rocco Borg? Did I get that right?
Hello, I'm Rocco. I wrestled here at Oxford, and I graduated in 2013. I'm here to talk about the former wrestling coach, Ross Winger. So he was, I think he was let go a month ago. I know you guys probably don't know too much about it, but he's done a lot for Oxford Wrestling Program. We have a pretty storied program, and I think the past 10 years, we've had over 30 All-Staters and over eight kids go to Division One Wrestling. And ever since he got here, I really think he's really changed the culture and brought Oxford Wrestling back. For example, this year, they beat multiple top-eight teams, ranked top-six most of the year. I think they had five in the semifinals. He's had a really good year, and not only that, he doubled the middle school and high school teams. They're now officially the biggest high school wrestling team in the state, I think with 62 wrestlers. And just on his character, like, I know I'm biased, I'm his friend, but he's made me and my brother back there, who both wrestle Division One, a lot better coaches, a lot better humans. And it's really hard as a youth and high school kid to find, like, a really good role model that shows, like, what it means to be a good adult and how sports can positively impact you. And it really, in fact, impacted my family, so I think letting go of Ross Winger is a massive issue. And I mean, the thing to do to get him back. And my biggest concern, too, because we've gone really close to the Oxford families and the wrestling parents and all of them, is that I would just recommend they need to have a really good decision soon because we have possibly three Division One wrestlers on the team right now. If they don't know in two or three weeks, at least if that was my family, I would be gone. And those are three 4.0 students that probably will wrestle Division One, and I think there'll be a massive loss to the program. And I know people keep saying the program will survive. I don't know if it will survive this one. He's been kind of our lifeline, and he's been the biggest thing in proudstanding Oxford Wrestling in a while, and I really think we should reconsider and look into it. But thank you for listening. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Renee Upham?
Good evening. I recently attended a Michigan Department of Education School Board meeting with the parents of Hannah, Tate, Justin, and Madison. Steve Buck, Craig, and Nicole were invited to the table with board members to have a conversation, an actual conversation, where people spoke, listened, and sought to understand each other, unlike what happens here. As a former Oxford teacher and Oxford parent, I thought about the reactions of the community and my colleagues to the shooting. I've given people the benefit of the doubt. I've shown grace. I know from talking with staff that some staff have chosen to stay silent because some of them have spent a lot of the past two and a half years struggling to work through their own grief and shock. Others, however, have stayed silent because of fear, and still others, including members of the board, have never understood what their duties were prior to the 30th or what their moral and ethical duties are right now. I will never understand when it comes down to standing with families versus standing with the system, why so many of you have chosen the system. Steve St. Juliana touched on this subject last week at the Department of Ed meeting. His words are something I want to be a part of the official historical record. The Michigan School Board President Pamela Pugh said, and I quote, "I will not deny that the systems failed your children," end of quote. Steve St. Juliana says, and I quote, "I'll say personally, I think the teachers did everything right. They raised the red flag to the administration repeatedly. They walked the information down to the front office because they didn't want it to get lost in the email. They did everything right up until the point when it came time for them to speak up. Then they lost my respect. Only one-third of the teachers cooperated with Guidepost, and because the board hid behind, 'Oh, we can't make them cooperate,' which is false by your own policy, these staff members haven't stood up. And to me, that's been one of the biggest disappointments for me personally in this response. I cannot understand how these educators will not step up and speak. I keep hearing stories and talking to individuals how they're scared, they've been bullied, afraid of repercussions, but come on, these are our kids' lives we are talking about. So I'm sorry I have no sympathy for that argument, none. Step up and say something," end of quote. I'll end tonight with my own words. For staff and the Board of Ed members who talk about supporting these families, I am telling you that they are saying to you, 'Step up and say something.' We have reached out beyond the walls of this district for assistance. These families have an audience. They will not stop until they receive the answers they deserve, and we will support them." Thank you.
Danielle Krulzek?
Good evening. It's been 910 days since the tragedy. 910 days since Tate, Hannah, Justin, and Madison were murdered under your watch. Eight others physically injured, and in total, over 1,800 students and staff terrorized. My daughter was a freshman at the time of the shooting and is now preparing what will be her senior year. Hannah should be. By the time the class of 2025 graduates, they will have had three different principals, six superintendents, at least five different school board president changes, all in the span of four years. Two years later, still no accountability, still no leadership from the district. The instability, the lack of true leadership, the arrogance continues to be damaging for all. Two and a half years later, and we still have two board members, Mary and Heather, with direct responsibility, refusing to step down. While many of you are also refusing to step up and do what's right, I'm cautiously optimistic of Tanya's arrival and her anticipated leadership we are so desperately in need of and deserve. Since December of 2021, there's been 106 Board of Education meetings held, giving ample opportunity for all of you, the district, the board, to communicate, acknowledge responsibility for the district's failures, and still nothing. Last week, I also attended the State of Michigan Board of Education workshop with the parents of Tate, Hannah, Justin, and Madison. I spoke during public comment in full support of these families and the necessary call to action, advocating for accountability and longstanding change for all of us impacted by this senseless tragedy and for future. I would encourage all of you here and listening at home to watch the video of that session. In this meeting, it was said clearly by a parent, accountability is necessary to drive change. If you cannot admit a mistake, you cannot fix it. This holds true here. We are still waiting for someone to admit the failures and take the corrective actions. I read a quote recently that said, "People who cannot communicate think everything is an argument. People who lack accountability think everything is an attack." There's no argument here, there's no attack. It's simply facts. Concerned parents and advocates for our children and for these families. Myself and others will continue to stand with, beside, for our families, for our children, and seeking accountability and justice for all of, all those impacted by this tragedy. We will do that here at the district level and at the state and across the nation. Thank you.
Thank you, Danielle. Steve St. Juliana.
Charge of removal. In accordance with MCL 380 dot 1107, petitioners Nicole Bussellé, Buck Mir, Jill Solve, Craig Schilling, and Steve St. Juliana, together the petitioners submit this charge of removal of a member of a Board of Education against respondents Heather Schaefer and Mary Hanser, together the respondents, in their capacity as members of the Oxford School Board of Education. Petitioners formally request gubernatorial removal of Heather Schaefer and Mary Hanser as members of the Oxford Community School Board of Education on the grounds of gross neglect of duty and misfeasance or malfeasance in office. Michigan statute provides the governor may remove a member of a school board from office under this section if the governor is satisfied from the evidence submitted to the governor that the member is guilty of gross neglect of duty, corrupt conduct in office, or any other misfeasance or malfeasance in office. In accordance with the MCL 380 1107 2A, this charge of removal specifies the grounds for removal accompanied by supporting evidence and by affidavits verifying that petitioners believe the charge is to be true.
Thank you, Steve. Sergio Borg.
Good evening. My name is Sergio Borg and I am a current volunteer coach for the high school wrestling team here in Oxford. I have been a part of the Oxford Wrestling Community for the past 19 years, starting as a youth wrestler for the club. As someone who has competed at every level throughout the program, which includes the club, middle school, and high school level, this program doesn't just mean a lot to me, it is even a part of me. This program has made an everlasting impact on my life, not only in the sport, but also in the classroom. When Coach Ross first became an assistant on the high school staff during the 2016-2017 season, he was quickly able to gain the respect of me and my teammates. That following summer, he was, he was named the assistant, or the head coach of the team. He took it upon himself to help out with my recruiting process and to move me on to further my education through college. Ross personally called the head wrestling coach of the University of Michigan to highlight both my accolades on the wrestling mat and in the classroom. This led to my acceptance into the College of Engineering and the opportunity to compete for the university's wrestling team, both of which are highly touted in their respective fields. I have since graduated from the Michigan, from Michigan with a bachelor's degree in industrial and operations engineering and competed within the team. I'm not the only student that has personally benefited from the coaching and leadership of Ross Winger. Since Coach Winger's tenure as head coach started in the 2017 and 2018 school year, he has produced a team state finalist, two individual finalists, 21 all-state wrestlers, and a top academic team in the state across all divisions in the past two seasons. Coach Winger has found a way to not only get the best out of his athletes in wrestling, but more importantly, in the classroom. Ross was also a pillar of support for the students here on campus who were coached by him in the hardest of times. Lastly, I want to point out that as a staff, we lose somewhere close to 40 man-hours a week put into the team and its efforts, whether that is through practice, administration, travel duties, and fundraising. That amount of time commitment to a high school sports team is flat out irreplaceable. Thank you all for your time today. I hope our words don't fall on deaf ears. Thank you.
Thank you, Sergio. Aaron Lewis.
So I could go on for hours as to why Ross is such a great coach, a better person, and a complete asset to this program and community in general. All those things are true and I'm sure you've heard as much from many others. I'm here today to ask why. Why would this district choose to part ways with such an asset? What could he have done that was so egregious that it justified letting him go? I would assume that the answer would be that it wasn't one major incident. Rather, many minor incidents that built up to create enough concern for firing, or for the firing to be considered justified. Has anyone outside the A.D.'s office taken a serious look into any of these incidents and done their due diligence to ensure that they were, in fact, justifiable? Has anyone investigated whether there were corrective plans put into place following any of these incidents? More importantly, that they were followed through by all parties involved, not just by Ross, but by the people that set them up. The same people that should have been the support system and backers of such an asset. The way that Ross was let go and how this has been handled is extremely disappointing. The parents and the students have been left completely in the dark regarding the entire situation. Not one email was sent out to the parents. The students were not let know. They let us all find out by word of mouth and let everyone come to their own conclusions as to why Ross was let go. If given the chance, I'm confident that Ross would be happy to sit down with anyone willing to listen and give an honest explanation of any incident that is on his report. He has the support of the coaches, the kids, the alumni, and the families in this program. So where's the disconnect? I'm here to ask you to put a halt to this hiring process until a thorough investigation can be done as to why Coach Ross was let go and whether it was truly justified. So I guess the real question now is, will anyone take the time to do what's right for our student athletes in this program? Thank you.
Thank you, Aaron. Zach Line.
Hello, varsity football coach here. The one thing I know is it is extremely hard to find good, good people. When you're trying to hire people, I always said that I'm not gonna hire a football coach, I'm gonna hire good people and teach them football. So when the opportunity came to get Ross on my staff, it was the first thing I did. Talking about time, I don't think anybody in that building spends more time in the high school than Ross did. We've been there and football season, he's out there first, he's the first one out there getting the kids going. After that, he's getting ready for his wrestling season coming up. Like nobody is more dedicated to the student athletes than Ross Winger. So when I go back to, we need to maintain good people, Ross is good people. I respect him. That's all I got.
Thank you, Zach. Kevin Kadrich.
Good evening. Respect to the families. This is, um, trivial compared to where you guys are and I, but I do wanna carry this forward. I came before you a few weeks ago to question the OHS wrestling coaching situation and absolutely zero has been done since. I have no skin in the game here other than as a concerned fan of an amazing program. It's mind boggling to me that there have been no meetings with the team or the parents. It's mind boggling to me that an assistant on the staff who has state champion qualifications and is a remarkable builder of human beings didn't even get a phone call. After all this district has been through, it seems to me that simple communication would be the easiest thing to accomplish. Even if you don't yet have a plan, how can you not at minimum talk to families to let them know what happened and what the game plan is going to be? Oxford sits in a unique position where you have tremendous program participation. I followed high school wrestling around the state for 30 years and I can assure you that the dedication you see from the Wildcat parents and coaching staff is not normal. It's nothing short of incredible. They built a culture of winning at every level. They deserve some open communication. There are kids in this program who are going to be college Division One athletes. They deserve to know if their efforts should continue in this district or not. And I can't believe I even had to type that sentence. These parents and students deserve better than to sit around all summer and wonder. Thanks for listening. Thanks for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Kevin. Brandon Day.
Good ea, good evening. Just, everybody said a lot of, a lot of great things about Ross. Um, I, I've only known Ross for a year. Previously, I've, I've been a head coach for 21 years and, and it had some success and, and been around a lot of good people. And, uh, I will tell you, I made a 90-minute trip every day to come here because of Ross Winger. And, uh, you know, I listen to you guys talk about budgets and, 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 you know, listen to these parents, their, their story is heartbreaking. And, and I can tell you that, uh, that, you know, what Zach said, Ross Winger is, is a first-class human being, a person that is, uh, you know, you're lucky to have, you are lucky to have. And, and I'm, I'm gonna be honest with you, you know, you're gonna lose kids. We're talking about budgets and, and, and you're a bigger district and kids are dollars, this and that. There's no one better. You're not gonna find anyone better. I, I know who's applied for this job and, and, and I'm gonna tell you right now, they're not better. And I would, I would hope that we can be adults and get the adults in the same room and, and, and resolve this situation because that, that guy lived for this program, he lived for this school, this community. You want more people like him in your school. You don't wanna remove people like him from your district. You, you want to attract individuals with the compassion and desire and loyalty that, that Ross Winger had for this school and, and for his program. I, I would, uh, you know, someone had mentioned to me, someone said Ross was unapproachable or that, uh, you know, people, you know, thought maybe he was standoffish. And, and I can tell you, please don't confuse assertive leadership and passion for being standoffish or for being unapproachable. That, that guy, I, just listening to the alumni talk about him and, 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 and you listening to stories about a, an athlete that he had that, that passed away and, and the mother telling me how Ross and the kids would come and shovel her snow. Like that, that's not a standoffish person. That, that's not a negative person. That, that's a person who's invested, who, who truly, in education, I've been a teacher for 22 years. We could, there are people that can win interviews and are horrible at their job. Ross Winger may not win the interview, but I'm telling you right now, he's, he's a first-class person and the kind of person you want in your community. So I hope you all can get in the same room and resolve this issue and, and support these kids, because I can tell you there's schools to your south and to your north that, that want your kids. And, and, and they will get them if, if Ross isn't, you know, put back in his position. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Brandon. Okay. There's a list of scheduled activities. We have some board meetings coming up, June, July, and August. Dr. Mark Fitch, any administrative clarification?
None.
Okay. Final board comments. It is 8:20 and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.